I can.
Good, I can't.
Grand one, the slide two right, doesn't win the slide two left.
Can we help?
No, I'm good.
All right, Chambers County Commissioner's Court, this is Tuesday, September the eighth, twenty twenty, uh, court gets nine thirty, we've had a few technical difficulties, it's now nine forty AM. It's a regular session of Commissioners' Court, held at the courthouse, actually the courthouse president, uh, on the, uh, Department heads, so if you'll all rise. Billy, would you like to leave?
Sure. Y'all are bound to hit me. Dear Heavenly Father, Lord God, we praise you for another beautiful day, we thank you for the cool weather, and we thank you for the opportunity to come together and do your will. Would we just ask that you put an air of discernment over this body as we go through the issues you've placed before us for decision making, guidance, counsel, board, and as always, we just ask that you lead our hands, lead our mouths, lead our heart, and let us be mindful of what we say, how we act, and let everything we do be your reward. Would we just ask for this, thank you.
Amen.
And then go to some pledges. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Under Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one, indivisible.
Play for who I met her, Brian behind us. And I was doing ninety miles an hour.
Hey, do you want to step out, make sure that you.
Austin, forty lane.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm. Don't be, don't be drunk. Going by.
Okay. All right, this is regular meeting in Commissioners' Court, uh, first item is Mary Beth Best gives us update on COVID nineteen.
Morning.
Morning.
So, uh, I'm just gonna give an update, uh, on our current numbers as of Friday. Since yesterday was a holiday, we will be updating our numbers, uh, later on this afternoon. So currently, we are, uh, happy that our active cases in the county are well below a hundred. We currently have seventy-one active cases, uh, with a total of one thousand one hundred and eighty-four cases in the county, uh, recovered, uh, eleven hundred. Uh, we currently have seven in the hospital with twelve deaths. Uh, we did recalculate our positivity rate on Friday. We calculated a fourteen-day positivity rate since we, the hurricane was a week before, which was down to thirteen point six. Uh, we had been running nineteen to twenty-one percent, and so I think we were kind of in line with Texas and with the region. Um, currently, I think Texas is at a nineteen point six, uh, positivity rate. Harris County is a little bit below ten percent also, so we are kind of right in line, uh, with Texas and with the region. Uh, we are currently working very closely with the schools on their, uh, positive cases, case investigations. We have an assigned Epi investigator as well as a contact tracer just to the schools. And we had a Zoom meeting with the school nurses, all of them last Tuesday, Dr. Brown, our entire staff, Epi investigators, contact tracers. And, um, it's really important for us to have open lines of communication, um, in order for us to isolate positive cases, do a case investigations, and that we're all on the same page. And, um, we know this will help us moving forward. It's not only students in school, but it's, um, after-hours, uh, you know, sporting events and all of those extracurricular activities as well. Uh, and so all of that seems to be going, uh, well so far. We do have positive cases, um, in all three schools, whether it's family members or positive students, but so far, um, we're working closely with all of them. I'm sure you are aware that the governor did extend the disaster declaration yesterday, and all this does, I think, is just protect us, uh, moving forward, um, and having the ability to, um, continue to work on COVID nineteen. Um, I think that he may be speaking later on this week, as far as some of his other orders. We just want to remind everyone that it's definitely not over, um, and just to continue those protective measures as far as masking, um, hand washing, you know, watching gatherings and things like that. We do know those mitigation efforts are working, and we still have those groups of people. We're trying to protect this, especially while school's back in session, so I'll be happy to entertain any questions that anyone has.
Any questions?
Okay.
Any questions? Can you hear me, Mary Beth?
I can.
And I know you've elaborated on this before, it's just, a lot of people have a, uh, a fault that the county is getting paid per case of COVID. Can you elaborate on that and clarify some of that, please?
Yeah, so we're definitely not getting paid per case, um, which is, which would be a nice thought, but we're, we're not getting paid per case. So, uh, we actually don't handle any, we don't do any testing here. Um, all cases that we get and that we investigate are actually being sent to us by all of our local healthcare providers, by, by the hospitals, by other jurisdictions outside of Chambers County. So we actually have nothing to do with any of the tests or any of the cases that are actually run. They're actually sent to us as required by statute or by, required by law, and then we actually investigate them as a, um, in this case, a high consequence infectious disease in order to slow the spread and contain the spread of, of this disease, um, in Chambers County. So we don't get paid, you know, we're, we're, you know, salaried employees, and so we get paid the same amount, but it is, it does behoove all of us to slow down the spread of this disease to keep it from spreading further. So, yeah, there's a lot of misnumbers and a lot of, um, you know, unfactual information out there, and we get that people are really passionate about this, we completely understand that. Um, but, you know, our goal is still gonna be the same, um, is to protect, um, the lives of our public in our, in our county that we, we dearly hold true to our hearts, so, yeah.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Mary Beth. Anybody else have questions? Okay, thank you, ma'am. All right, this is comments, Lauren, I know you have several. Okay, yeah, yeah, public hearing comment.
The first one is from Lorena Ferrera. She is against the eight percent property tax increase. I demand the court rescind the resolution path that allows the court to raise our property taxes up to eight percent without a vote of the taxpayer, and that the county must adopt a no new reserve rate at zero percent tax increase. Regarding, uh, CCID one, this first one is from Robert N. K. Reichel. My wife and I are opposed to any takeover or ownership of Fisher Road by TGS. Not only will it be nothing more than more eighteen-wheelers and a big safety issue, it will cause property values to drop in the area for sure. We are asking Commissioners' Court to vote against TGS moving forward with plans on taking ownership of Fisher Road. Uh, it's from Carol Pickering. Once again, an item regarding Fisher Road is on the agenda with no details. Any memorandum of understanding that would include large, heavy trucks on any part of Fisher Road is unacceptable to the citizens of the area. The two hundred and fifty-plus letters of opposition addressing the Fisher Road issue at the last Commissioners' Court meeting regarding Fisher Road is witness to the will of the citizens of this area. No large truck should ever be allowed on Fisher Road. This is a holiday weekend for Labor Day. Reducing the deadline for submission to three PM Monday rather than the written guidelines on the form uh, must be submitted restricts citizens' abilities to respond to this item. This one's from Robert Pickering. Uh, we did this during the hurricane, and now we are having to address it again. The majority of residents here in Beach City do not want to give away any roadways to individuals, period. We wish you would take the desires of your original constituents into consideration instead of complying to the big-money developers. And then I have just two in general comments. This one is from Gloria Brummer. I want to thank you all for organizing your public information department as you have. Samantha Humphrey is doing an excellent job in providing information to the media and public, responding to requests for information. She and Ryan Hoseapple did an excellent job during, during Hurricane Laura threat in updating critical information that our residents needed to know to keep them and their properties safe. We, the Seabreeze Beacon, are then able to send this real-time information to our thousands of Facebook friends. Again, thank you for setting up a public information system, it is working, and Samantha and Ryan, keep up the good work. This one is from Kevin and Karen's Treasures. Our small business has struggled with location and sales. However, we feel confident the location on FM five sixty-three will increase sales and be able to keep our business going, but we must keep our investment in overhead low. The problem is the current requirement to install, to install an expensive retention pond system for our small business. We feel we cannot move our business to our new location with the added costs associated with the retention pond. Justification for not installing a retention pond. The building to be used for our business is only sixteen by forty, which is six hundred and forty square feet. The building is installed on the side of a previous building which no longer exists. The ground around the previous building was built up six to twelve inches above the surrounding area, an encompassed an area of slightly smaller than our new building. The ground was not level, so additional dirt was brought in to level out the area. This increased the area that was raised by only two hundred square feet. Due to the provision business, the raised area already was drained, already was drained to the lower elevation. So our change is limited to the additional two hundred square feet of raised ground. No concrete is being poured for a foundation, instead, a block-and-beam foundation has been used to try and prevent installation of an expensive drainage retention pond. We will be using a gravel parking area, so there will not be any poured concrete or asphalt. Much of the parking area already is gravel from the previous business. This will allow rainfall to soak into the ground in the parking area. The walkway will be raised, wooden deck to prevent pouring concrete. This will allow rainfall to soak into the ground and in the walkway area. So nearly the entire area will still be able to absorb rainfall into the soil other than what is underneath the building itself. We feel that using the above plan, the impact on the surrounding area will be minimal, and we would like the Commissioners to consider waiving this retention pond requirement for our small business. In addition, the current building that we would convert to our business is already installed as residential on the site explained above, installed as a storage building which was what we are currently using. If the retention pond issue is not able to be resolved, the building will continue to be used for storage. So respectfully, we request that Commissioners' Court consider our proposal. We have many customers that would like to see us able to stay in business in the area.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Make sure it passes, the last one on the county premiere. All right, let's go down to two point one, discussing considering health care, municipal community action programs, grant two thousand nineteen out of four. As annual report of the same grant you've had for years, any questions? That's right. Thank you, Tom. Thanks, Sean. Motion accept. So moved, yeah. Second, motion by Commissioner Collins, second by Commissioner Thomas. No questions? Close, motion carries. Run, bring us three point one, discussing center memorandum of understanding between Chambers County and CCID number one regarding improvements, maintenance, permitting, and the vote for some portion of Fisher Road.
Yes, sir, Judge, I think we have a couple of comments on that item to go read them first, or I think that Ms. Hodge wanted to get online and.
Now, she was, uh, Ms. Hodge was on, uh, drainage, right?
Oh, uh. Excuse me.
That's all right. This is our first, uh, in-person Commissioners' Court.
Yeah.
We're rusty, Judge.
Yeah.
But we're in person, but we're still on YouTube.
No, thank you very much.
Wait, for the record, I could see it staying on YouTube forever, and whether you're meeting in person in the courtroom, here in the, uh, conference room, or within social distance, or wherever it is.
Yes, sir, I'll be happy to take that.
Okay.
Okay, uh, first, I want to make sure that people listening and everyone understands, I think I did contact most, let them know that the MOUs that we are, uh, considering today are actually online on the county website in the agenda package. And I want to take this time to thank, uh, the judge, our county engineer, Corey Taylor, uh, Mayor Lassiter, uh, Mayor-elect of the city, Ryan Daigle, uh, and, uh, James Scott with TTS. We sat down and worked up what I think is a very, very good, uh, win-win situation, a compromise on both sides, but, you know, a good win situation for everyone, and, uh, managed to get this into our MOUs that we're looking at today. So what we've gotten to, uh, in exchange for the county allowing TTS to improve the first fourteen hundred feet, starting at Cedarport Parkway and going, uh, east from there, they will improve that to a five-lane concrete road. It will have two lanes each direction, a center turn lane, and then ten-foot shoulders. So, uh, and they will be accessing, uh, trucks from that, uh, section of fourteen feet only. The remaining sixty-eight hundred feet of Fisher Road will remain unimproved and will be weight limited to the current weight limit of ten thousand pounds. The county is not giving up ownership of any of, uh, Fisher Road. That is totally off the table. Cedarport actually withdrew their request and understand that they will never take ownership of Fisher Road. And in exchange for us doing that, uh, they have agreed to run a water line, a firewater main all the way up to twenty-three fifty-four, and then take it over to our fire station. That should ho, lower our insurance modifier, our ISO ratings, to possibly a six or seven, seven, possibly a six, which will make a great difference on insurance rates, you know, for people that live in that area. Anybody within five miles of that station should be able to get that new insurance rating once, uh, the line's in and the modifier is then reevaluated. In addition to that, uh, Cedarport will hire a landscape architect and get the landscape architect to work with their drainage engineers and also with our county engineer, looking at a design that they can put detention and walking trails, mitigation area around the perimeter of their park. This is in to, in an order to try to get some separation between the residential and the industrial development. We have a county ordinance that requires fifty feet, but we're looking to expand that fifty-foot rate quite a bit. As this is going in, they want to do it in a way that would be aesthetically pleasing and incorporate in some bike trails, some walking trails, some berms, and, you know, it might even be a good chance for some joint venture with the county to put in a park or two along that area. Uh, the industrial development, one thing I don't think the residents understand, or many of them don't, is TGS has the right to develop their property. They own, uh, over eight thousand acres that is currently undeveloped with approximately eight miles of frontage on twenty-three fifty-four. And twenty-three fifty-four is a state road, and the county has no jurisdiction over that road whatsoever. And, uh, TGS has the legal right, and Texas Department, as actually of my understanding, has already approved them to get access to their property for twenty-three fifty-four. So if we just bowed up and refused to give them any access to their property whatsoever on Fisher Road, they have no choice but to access their property from twenty-three fifty-four. And that would put trucks on twenty-three fifty-four coming from thirty-one eighty down to twenty-three fifty-four. It would be a much nastier situation than what we're looking at today. Uh, we've been working very, very hard to try to avoid that. TGS is cooperating, they understand that we don't want trucks on, uh, twenty-three fifty-four. They want to develop their property, they have every legal right in this world to develop their property. And so we are working, trying to get them access off of a small portion of Fisher Road and do away with any trucks getting on twenty-three fifty-four and them accessing off of twenty-three fifty-four. We still got a long way to go because they got a whole lot of land with it, and we're working on it very hard. We're looking at some other alternatives that might be able to get access from ninety-nine, BW four to come down into the north end of the property. But we've got to keep this working relationship going with them. I personally think this, uh, MOU is great for everyone involved. Uh, like I said, Mayor Lassiter and, uh, the Mayor-elect, uh, Ryan, uh, Daigle both sat in these meetings with us and helped negotiate this. I think it's a good situation for everyone, and, uh, I would like to make a motion that we approve the MOU. There's actually two MOUs that's in our package. One of them was the one, the last one we got from TTS, and the other one was the one that's a red line marked up from, uh, our attorney, Nathan Brandon Meyer. So I'd like to make a motion that we approve the marked-up version of it, that Nathan, uh, Brandon Meyer made.
This one was second here. Listen, excuse me, motion by Commissioner Collins, second by Commissioner Thomas. Let's approve the marked-up version of Nathan Brandon Meyer, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, the MOU, the marked-up version, the MOU, uh, provided by Nathan Brandon Meyer. All right, any questions?
No, Judge.
Go ahead.
Um, now, any industry, and I spoke with this on Corey as well, any industry can get a permit from the state to run on the county road, uh, twenty-two six, to run heavy haul on our county roads, and we can't stop them. Did they discuss that? I mean, they, they wouldn't even try to implement that, even though that last fifty-something hundred feet is the county maintained heavy, uh, permitted road. Uh, they could get that permit and still run those heavy loads on our road.
Not over ten thousand pounds, they, they could run it over eighty thousand dollars, but they can't on a ten thousand.
I just checked, I want to make sure that I can have Corey about that as well. On that permit there, I mean, I mean, are you familiar with that, the twenty-two six?
I am, so, uh, Austin, is this picking me up from here?
Yeah.
Okay, so, okay, so that, what, the permit you're talking about is a Department of Motor Vehicle permit.
Okay.
And so, uh, which is a sister or brother agency to Texas Department, essentially, but they do all permitting for the state of Texas. And if you, um, okay, for instance, let's just say on twenty-three fifty-four, there are sand pits there. Uh, we've had several issues with the sand pits over the years. Uh, I, I think the residents would like to restrict that and just say, we can't, we can't have this, you know, we shouldn't allow the trucks to be there, but that is their property. Uh, there, the county has no zoning capabilities, we're not a city, we can't zone, so the trucks, that is a point of, they have to get to that location. So if twenty-three fifty-four was load, load zoned for ten thousand pounds like Fisher Road is, um, is, that is what they would have to do, is they would have to follow a load acceptable route up until twenty-three fifty-four, and then they'd travel twenty-three fifty-four. Now, they might have to pay damages for, you know, if, if it's to be proven that they're causing damage to that section of roadway. But as it relates to Fisher Road, Fisher Road is ten thousand pounds, and there is, right now, they could travel ninety-nine and, uh, from ninety-nine to Cedarport Parkway that comes down to Fisher Road is concrete, and the new intersection is concrete, so technically, as long as, and, and under this agreement, if they extended fourteen hundred feet improving that roadway, then all of their access would have to come to legal load limit, uh, up to eighty thousand. And so you mentioned heavy, heavy haul, heavy haul is actually up to a hundred thousand, which they can't do. This is Fisher Road, twenty-three fifty-four, none of those are heavy haul roads. Um, their legal limit, which is eighty thousand, on, uh, Fisher Road, most of it is load zoned at ten thousand. So they technically cannot travel, uh, down twenty-three fifty-four and across Fisher Road legally. Um, you know, of, of course, anybody does something illegal every once in a while. We had some issues with it last year, we got Sheriff's Department over there, they stopped it. So if we approve this, it only allows legally for them to travel from ninety-nine down the new section of concrete to their property. And maintaining the ten thousand pound limit on the east end of it restricts them from using twenty-three fifty-four. But like Billy said, if, if we don't do this, then they have to access their property in twenty-three fifty-four. They, I actually calculated it with the, with the driveways that they already have on, like, fourteen oh five and ninety-nine on other state highways. Uh, if they had that same, if Texas Department allowed the same amount of spacing for their driveways along twenty-three fifty-four for that eight miles, they would have somewhere between ninety and a hundred and twelve driveways on twenty-three fifty-four. So that's the reason it's so important, in my opinion, for us to try to work out a, you know, an agreement where we can push that traffic back to ninety-nine and salvage or try to preserve twenty-three fifty-four and, uh, separate out the truck traffic from the pedestrian traffic.
Okay, I just want a little clarification.
Yeah.
I appreciate that. Had Billy, that they's made mention of how many driveways they're gonna try getting on twenty-three fifty-four later, or has that been in discussion? If, if.
No, no, there has not really been any discussion as how many they're going to get on twenty-three fifty-four. They are well aware that we would like to keep zero on twenty-three fifty-four.
Absolutely.
Whether that's possible in the long run or not, I don't know. I think it is because they've got Cedarport Parkway, which enters in, and it's a nice road, and it really connects to ninety-nine, and they can do a lot of internal connection through it. If we can work out the section right now that they're trying to get, which is on the north side of Fisher Road, and maybe get another access point to the north of that, which we started looking at last week, you know, with BW four on the east side of ninety-nine, there's some possibilities. And right now, everybody's working together, you know, they did hear those two hundred and forty public comments, you know, and that was good, because, you know, now they understand that the citizens are concerned, they do care, and they've been, TGS in this last week or two has been very cooperative, we're working together, you know, so if we keep this spirit up and going, I think we're gonna work out something for everyone that, you know, will.
You got industrial development, you got residential, you know, we just got to make the message best. Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right, I got a motion of second. Any other questions? Here now, those in favor? Close, motion carries. All right, it's now ten oh seven, we are going to reset a regular session of Commissioners' Court and go into the public hearing. And we'll skip down to one point five, I know there's some folks here on that. Public hearing, ten AM, concerning creation of Chambers County Drainage District Number One and compliance protocol, chapter fifty-six. And I know Ms. Marcia Hodge is, is.
Coming in now.
In Austin.
Okay, Ms. Hodge, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Good morning, Mark.
Good morning.
You may proceed when you're ready with the public comment.
All right, gentlemen of the court, thank you for allowing me to speak today on behalf of the citizens of West Chambers County who support the formation of the Chambers County Drainage District Number One, Agenda Item one point five and one point six. My name is Marcia Hodge, and I am the petitioner of record on this particular topic. I support the formation of the Chambers County Drainage District Number One. After several inquiries as to what Chambers County was doing to support our citizens in West Chambers County with regards to drainage, I was told the best path forward may be to petition the court for the formation of the Drainage District. This was because the county is vastly under-resourced to address the growing problems with drainage. I understand there's a limited staff and limited financial resources to address this problem, so I agreed to file the petition. This was done with the support of many, many of our neighbors. We rallied together the points of contact in several neighborhoods, including Hunter's Chase, Country Meadows, Pine Meadows, Brookstone, Legends Bay, and Vera Ranch, just to name a few. We greatly appreciate the support we've had from the handful of the. We greatly appreciate the support we've had from the handful of the Chambers County Commissioners who've helped us network and rally support for the formation of this district. I have been a resident of West Chambers County for over fourteen years. Over the span of time, I've seen monumental growth, which I view as a positive change. I've also witnessed monumental changes to the drainage problem. When we have a major rain event, it is of course expected that waters will rise. The issue we have is the water is not receding as it used to. As close as we are to the bayous in the bay, we should not be experiencing these problems repeatedly. We live on three and a half acres in Barra Ranch with the drainage easement directly behind our property. When it rains a normal amount, not a tropical storm or a major rain event, our backyard takes weeks to drain. Our animals are flooded out of the entirety of our yard. Something must be done to drain the swamp in our backyards and neighborhoods. As a volunteer in our community, I've heard many voices rise up and ask the county what is being done. And the answer is, there's just a lack of resources, a very small set staff with a county engineer. I understand the east side and central side of the county are in a drainage district. And surely it has not solved all their problems. But I also understand that passing the formation of the district will force a study to be conducted to see what the problems are and proposed resolutions. And that this will be done using an existing budget for the county. Our citizens deserve for this study to be conducted. I am not for the additional tax to fund this district. And would like to go on record stating, I believe the drainage problems can be fixed out of the tax revenue, particularly if the abatements were eliminated slash allowed to expire as there is an incredible amount of tax revenue that is given away to industry in an area with an already low tax rates. I asked the court today to find the creation of the Chambers County Drainage District Number One to be feasible, practical, and needed. I further ask the court to find the formation of the drainage district to be conducive and a benefit to those citizens of Chambers County who are not already in a drainage district.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Appreciate your comments. Be safe out there.
Likewise.
Two downstairs that are going to come up, want to get them. So I guess it's fitting, we're talking about drainage and it starts raining. Is there anyone on the court that would like to add something to their department hearing?
I'm a judge. Scott, but you put this, you know, when it made this resolution, we're, you know, we're discussing drainage, when you're talking about here not having a drainage program. There were three things there that had to be met. Something was practical, something was where you could do something. There were three, I don't remember them, I don't have my agenda because I can't see them. But anyway, and they only have, the engineer probably only has thirty days or twenty days to come up with those three things? Or is that done before or?
Okay, let's hang off on that, Scott. All right, so sorry to fill out your name for the record, give us your comment, please.
Under Barra Ranch subdivision and been a resident there for the last twelve years. And truly believe that drainage district is necessary to perform the necessary studies and evaluations to find short-term and long-term solutions for our community. Been there for twenty years and I've seen how the, the lack of drainage or adequate drainage has gotten worse and worse for my community. Got pictures of recent storms, as, as early as May twenty-eight. I'm sorry. And, no, that's fine, I think so. And it's what amazed me, the main driver for me to be here is the comparison between May twenty-eight to our very heavy storm and the picture you look side to side on August twenty-seven during Harvey, just about same amount of water on my street and my yard and my neighbor's yards. So the amount of growth that we have in the West Chambers County with all the industrial growth, which is very necessary, we all need to do that in our own business of work. But it seems to me that there's not adequate planning, adequate planning for the drainage. I have an engineering background, so I know a little bit about hydraulics. And I'm not trying to here to, to, to criticize, but I really want to see a proactive approach in this because of my, my own community. And now I had to have flood insurance, my husband never had to do that before. After May twenty-eight, I saw as close as hurting. So I really ask you to please consider this and pay attention very close to our community. And also consider the, the fact that we have all this growth, all this in previous coverage, all of this new cover ground that is not absorbing water and goes to my common part, to our community.
Did I ask you to state your name for record? Sir? Did I ask you to state your name?
I did, I swear, Mark.
All right, thanks. All right, I'll say thank you if you'll just leave that on the table. Thank you, I was like, take care.
Okay, I think that's it for the drainage.
All right, did you have any?
I have, Marsha Hodge was the one and then I was like, you didn't give anything.
I thought you had. All right, so it's ten seventeen AM. We will adjourn a public hearing. Drainage District, we have someone here on one point one, public hearing, ten AM. Set the twenty, twenty tax rate, there's no revenue rate of point five thirty-nine four nine oh, or one hundred. And actually, the. Go ahead.
These are, these are just general, ones for the eight percent property increase and one is just a general comment.
One's what?
One's just a general comment, public comment.
Okay, so there's no public hearing, let's go in. They want to do a citizen comment. All right, bring him in.
You want your form, Mr. Ray Allen?
Hey. Hello?
Okay, so for the record, I understand that you're going down more in the man.
Correct, sure.
Okay.
Okay.
Back to the next one.
My name is Darlene McPherson-Parkers. My company is MDP Consulting Incorporated. And I would like to comment on item three point seven. Three point seven, I don't have an agenda in front of me, is asking you to approve additional services in the amount of a hundred and thirteen and plus dollars for air conditioning for an animal, animal control facility.
At seven point one.
It's what?
I am seven point one.
Seven point one, I am so sorry.
Okay.
Okay, so this leads me to a lot of questions. First of all, how big is the building? Why does it cost so much to put air conditioning in it? At that, at that cost, if it's two ten-ton units plus stuff, work and labor, I could see it. But I, I, there's just too many questions, like what, what's being put in for that amount of money? And as a citizen, you know this, and those of you who, I mean, Gary, Gary Nelson knows this. He's been on the Commissioners' Court for a while. If I, if I see things like this, I'm going to question because I know that it doesn't cost that much money to put in air conditioning. Now, how big is the building? That's my question.
We're, we're going to discuss this, we'll get that out. We haven't actually got the report from the Land District. It's just something.
Okay, so would you please make note of those things? How big is the building and what are they putting in? Okay, thank, thank you so much. And thank, thank you for allowing me to speak.
Yes, ma'am. All right, ma'am, just thanks for that, the record.
Good morning, my name is Rachel Heisler. I'm here just representing the citizens of our county. I'd like to let you know that I am a member of the Chambers County Republican Party. And I do go to the regular meetings. Some of you I've seen there, others who have not. You're always welcome to attend the meetings and we love to see our elected officials at the meetings, participating, hearing what the county party has to say and add. I wanted to comment about the eight percent emergency tax rate. I really feel strongly against it. And I know that a lot of other citizens in our county also feel strongly against it. In the event of an emergency, it's not the time to be raising taxes on the citizens of this county. If you've been through any kind of emergency where you had to start over and rebuild everything and throw all your stuff in the trash out on the side of the road and wait for the county to come pick it up while you look at it every day, it's no fun. It's not a good time for someone to come down on you and say, you need to give us more money. I know that a lot of you have commented that you know, you have no intention of ever raising the taxes. And I think that's wonderful. But I'd like you to back it up by rescinding that motion and taking it off the table. Because if you have no intention of using it, then why are we wasting time on it? And I also would like to comment that I'm so glad that y'all are all meeting in person today. And I'm so thankful to be able to be here and speak to you in person today. And I would love to see this continue. Thanks.
Well, it seems to be working pretty good.
Well, and I, I would say, you know, that, that's, as a, as a citizen watching on YouTube, in a perfect world, it works great, but I have wind stream. And I'm sure y'all do too. So, you know, it, it does lag, it does glitch and we miss things. And it's just not the same as being able to be in person. And, and for me to be here and look at you in the eye and be able to talk to you as a person and not just someone behind a screen, I think is important. It is so important because we want to work with our elected officials. We're not here to attack, we want to work with you. And so we need to be able to have this dialogue and able to work together. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
We'll see you again. Thanks, great job. Thank you.
All right, we're trying to public hearing. Relation of the drainage district, so one says, that's the report, five. The creation of the Chambers County Drainage District Number One is faithful and practical and is needed and would be conducive to public health or would be a public benefit or public.
Okay, so as you saw, I tried to put in a few pages of information into the packet. And Commissioner Nelson is correct, statute specifically says you've got to be able to illustrate that it is feasible and practical and needed, and then one of the following three, and would be conducive to public health or would be a public benefit or a public utility. So that finding is what one point six is basically about, concurrent or immediately after hearing. You're supposed to either make that finding or not make that finding. Now, Commissioner Nelson asked about the timing. So my expectation would be that if this court were to make the finding that you had at least four of those six, then the next thing you would need to do is engage in the language of the statute is to appoint an engineer to do so. However, that is going to be the standard acquisition of an expert. So engineers acquisition, actually, you know, is you find the best person, then you negotiate a contract and then you hire them or, you know, that general process. So that doesn't need to be concurrent with today, nor should it be because quite frankly, you need to figure out who you want. And I don't think anybody is ready on this day to make that appointment. You can make the preceding findings that are required. So when you talk about the timing, that, that chapter of the Water Code does not give any specific timelines after the finding or when engineer must be engaged. Now, it does say under Water Code fifty-six point zero two four, I believe, which will be the last page of that attachment, that after the engineer files his preliminary report, then there is a timeline that does kick in. So whether that's one month, five months, twelve months from now, that is in that timeline for fifty-six point oh two four to extend for getting it back before the court. And what it says is, the first regular or special meeting is reported after the engineer files his preliminary report with the clerk. The Commissioners' Court shall schedule the report for a hearing at a regular or special meeting, which must be held during the period beginning on the twentieth day and ending with the thirtieth day after the date the Commissioners' Court schedules a hearing. And then the notice as required by this chapter goes into effect. So, no, today you are required to either make a finding of or here or they're not. And then you go into the engagement of an engineering professional as you normally would.
The way that's working, Scott, is that you know, going to go out the quality.
So after you make the finding, then the next step I would recommend would be going through the standard process to hire an engineer, which is qualifications, either requesting qualifications or using an engineer that you have already qualified. Your path is good as the statute allows for discretion.
I just want to make sure when you make the back on another court, we have to go out the quality.
Probably needs it.
For all the stuff that you can do, but I'm trying to get to. To go out for quality traces to hire an engineer.
It'd probably be best to put it on a different.
That's.
So Cory, where do you spend time with studies that are already in the works? Good question. In some areas, it will overlap, but I guess it just gets down into the actual details of, if, if I remember back, and I haven't looked at it in the last couple of days, but if I remember looking at this last month or maybe two months ago when this first came up, it actually talks about some specific elevations and some, as I think Gary was mentioning, some pretty detailed elements that I would think they take more than thirty days for certain. So I think it would just get down into the actual requirements of house specifics. So I think from an aspect of what we're doing with like Freezer Nichols on the, on the west side LGA as, as they are working on stuff, if, I think they're kind of a little bit higher level, larger scope of detail. And I think this might be a little bit more specific down to the actual, what's happening specifically at ground level in some of these instances. So, I don't know, maybe, maybe we can mesh with one of the existing contracts that we already have in place and just add this level of detail in specific areas and it might speed up. I would need to talk to, to them and figure that out.
I think one thing we need to do is really look at the scope and see exactly what we're going to do with that also.
True, yeah, that's what I'm saying, yeah, that's what I was trying to imply is that it's going to come down to the scoping of what is specifically required, yeah.
And that probably need to be done on another, another page. But I'd like to ask any of the Commissioners, if there's any of these requirements that you feel. that you feel this does not need, and could we discuss what are the specific requirements you don't think it needs? And personally, I think it needs all of them.
We, we've done an extensive, extensive study already. We did, oh, it's been seven, eight years ago. We have a manual that talks about the slopes of banks, the, the growth in the different channels. How about the one I, Clotz, well, Clotz and Associates, yeah. Yeah, and I think Clotz and Associates might be someone that we want to possibly look at. But I mean, I don't know how many who pay for that thing, it wouldn't cheap. But we've already, we've got that, we've got that manual already been, you know, it's already in place.
Well, okay, so, and I, let me just start with that a little bit, because what I heard on the public comment a while ago was different than what Clotz, you know, studied. I mean, they, they studied major drainage areas. What, what I hear is subdivision issues that are within an HOA. And so, I, you know, I don't know, that's, I mean, a, and what that drains into going out behind Barrow Ranch, you know, that's an area that it's through private property, and the county tried to get permission to go onto private property and clean that out after, I believe it was after Harvey, and was denied. And so, it would take either those, you know, change of heart from those, you know, those individuals to give up or to allow access to change, you know, what they look at every day from a wooded, you know, area that protects their vision from others, to, you know, a cleared out area that helps drainage for the people above them. And then for the stuff inside an HOA, you know, that's all stuff that the HOAs have control over. They have the ability to, I mean, that's why they have dues. Well, that's why you pay dues, is to be able to handle stuff within an HOA. These are not areas that are, it's not county responsibility at this point. And it's not anything that Clotz or anybody else has looked at, because it's, it is, it's, it's an HOA thing. It's, it's not part of a major drainage path. So, I don't know, that's just something, that goes back to what goes down with it. Scope, that scope is totally different from anything we've looked at before. And it, we need to determine, before going into, whatever we go into, what is gonna be the, what would, what would the drainage district actually do? You know, what would be their responsibility? Would they just take on, you know, new drainage paths that are not in HOAs, or do they, anything related to drainage, even in somebody's backyard? You know, would you go, I, I'm not sure.
Well, Corey, you know, you and I have had this conversation many, many, many times before. And on many occasions, I've had to tell my residents, "I'm sorry, I just can't go." You know, and that's, that's not a good thing, because we got an issue in an area where we really shouldn't have an issue. We are so close to the bay, but we, this county does not own any of the drainage exit points that go in and dump into the bay. They're all going through private property. And it doesn't matter how good a developer develops his property and puts in his detention. If downstream it gets backed up and it's not taking that outflow, it's gonna back up into the homes. You know, we got an area, I think about, we all know about three-fourths of the amount of people in Chambers County live right there on the West Side. And it's booming like crazy, you know, probably, best I calculate, about 90% of our tax base is right there. You know, and that's where people work. So, we've got a situation that's progressively getting worse. And, you know, I had this problem, Corey and I, just last week, a week before last, with mishepeds, you know, had Corey just basically wrote her an email, said, "I'm sorry, ma'am, you know, that's not the county issue." And that's just not right. You know, what he did, thank God, fixed a portion of it, reached over in a text out ditch, and cut, you know, some brush that had grown up. But we just never made the commitment. This court has kicked the can down the road. I've sat in here many times, even before I was a commissioner, and heard people that had flooded and this poor county, we're doing the work on that, we're getting on it. I've been on a committee to prioritize what drainage is, we need to look at, but nothing ever really gets done. You know, the county could do this, or the district can do it, but whichever way it goes, the commitment needs to get made to do something on the West Side for drainage. I recognize the East Side still has issues. I got no problems. We're trying to address that. But I don't want to kick the can down the road anymore. On our drainage issues, they should not be major, but we don't address them, and we don't keep these things maintained. We got the RWJ drainage that has not been finished yet. We had a contractor that didn't finish up under the grant. We've got to get in there and finish it. We have zero funds set aside and available to finish that project. We're wrapping up the Kilgore Central Drainage. It's got to be maintained. We can't maintain our roadside ditches, let alone maintain these drainage areas, or put in more if we need to. So, I mean, we just got to do something. I've done some work on looking at some numbers in this district, and, and actually Aaron helped do these numbers. But this district has the petition space, has the tax space, for possibly seventeen and a half billion dollars. And that's because there are no tax abatement. This district were formed, and there, there are no form, there are no tax abatements for the district. And if the county does it, then this, the tax abatements would take place. So, to raise the same amount of money that Trinity Bay raises to maintain their drainage on their tax, and their tax rate, what, forty, below forty cents? That, that two cents tax rate in this district would raise the same amount of money that Trinity Bay raises with forty cents. I think it's feasible. I think it's very feasible. And that's assuming we need that much funding. They've got three to four times the amount of landmass, and they're much further away from the bay in Monmouth County. So, I, I think it's very, very feasible. If the county did it on its own to raise that same amount of money, excluding what's in Trinity Bay, that two cents, because of the abatements, that two cents would be three and a half cents to raise that same amount of money that Trinity Bay raises. So, I mean, it's feasible, whether the county does it, the district does it, or whatever, is needed. We've got an area that is rapidly growing, and it's not gonna get easier tomorrow than it is today. We just got to make the commitment and do it. Or, or get out of the way and let the citizens vote, or whether, if we do the district, the citizens actually have to vote to me. So, you know, we can let them decide if they want it or not, but we need to move to the next step.
I was just gonna say, like I mentioned in the last one, I believe, the designation that you give for proposed districts right now, if I heard correctly, were not covered by Trinity Bay initially. And then the commissioner's court can modify the scope after the preliminary hearing is in and, and go from there. So, even if you have it as broad as everything not covered by Trinity Bay initially, after preliminary reports, if more information comes in about what's needed and what's not, or what might be needed in the future, you can make those modifications. So, you're not committing, if you go forward and make these findings affirmatively today, you're not committing to 100% of Chambers County that's not in Trinity Bay, shall be in this district. You're just keeping that option open in the future, which is what I recommend. Everybody, at any time, make sure you have all of your options moving forward, we can get to the point where you need to.
Scott, can you, can you address the fact that, and some of the things you've read on this stuff, that, that some of these entities that we're talking about, a lot of this tax base then, has the ability to opt out of a district because they already take care of their own drainage? Like CCID number one, Mount Belky. I mean, does it, is there a place in the code that allows them not to, not to be a part of the?
I have not seen that personally, but I also haven't researched the issue of who is excluded other than the general rule of, other than a existing water district. So, that would be something I can certainly look into for y'all, that would be obviously necessary for the engineer's initial preliminary report, to make sure that once excluded, he doesn't waste his time or money on. But no, until you mention it right now, I have not heard of that.
Well, that would, you know, that would greatly affect these numbers that Billy's talking about as far as taxable value, because CCID number one, it already does, you know, they have their water, they have water treatment plant over there that they tax their interest themselves for. And there is drainage issues that they, that they take care of themselves, that, you know, I don't, I don't know that they'd be interested in. And I think, I'm, I'm misunderstanding this. You know, we're talking about a district, and we're talking about a district. My opinion of that is that it's a separate entity.
It would be a separate entity, but, you know, the CCIDs.
Not what they're asking for.
I understand that. Well, I'm saying it could go either way. You know, this court can make a decision whether we want to allow voters to vote on the district, or whether we want to address it in-house. I mean, we, we can do either.
We are doing that. I mean, we, we made an investment last year in a piece of equipment that we've gone in there and started clearing some of these grown up ditches, but we, we've already committed to make that investment.
Gary, you put a little bit of lipstick on a pig. It's not fixing the problem.
Well, you're saying that we hadn't spent any money on it, it's not exactly accurate.
We have. We, we have not really totally committed to getting the exit points, buying the land, getting the right of ways, and staying on it. We get distracted, and we're not focused on it.
Well, I've, I've always said all.
You're up, do it, or?
I've said all along that we needed to do that, and the best time to get those right of ways is after a major event. I think we had seven landowners that we're dealing with on, that check those channels over there. We should have been able to get the right of ways, but, and we've got a company I thought that was hired to do that, but we hadn't got them. I mean, that's, that's.
I, I tell people all the time, I can't help, I mean, it's really, it could happen.
Which right of way, Tom, I hear?
Hat Berry. I mean, we have seven landowners to deal with through there that we, if we could have got those people signed up for that to major event, which, the, the best time, I mean, that's when people.
I, I agree, that's, that's.
The further you get away from it, the harder it is to get those right of ways.
I agree, Gary, 100%. But the HOAs are basically the same thing, C O D, or C I D, T C I D. You know, they, they take care of their drainage inside their park or inside their development, and they're there, as, but like, you know, Corey said, they've got, they're supposed to maintain their drainage inside of their development. And then when it goes out, then it's, then it's the counties or the districts, or whatever. But right now, when it goes out, it's going through private property.
So, how does that developer develop that property without an outfall? I mean, like you said, for typical Trinity Bay.
Well, well, it's a, it's a natural drainage path that's already there. I mean, it's not.
It's a gully.
It's, yeah, it's a gully, and the gully just happens to go through private property. And so.
Does that help to show their outfall, I guess, from their pension?
I am, so they outfall into a natural drainage path, you know, that's, that happened to be there. I mean, it's.
Should they be made, and I'm talking about the future, should they be made to get a, a right of way on it?
I don't know. I, that's what I, I've scratched my head, because, I mean, that's, it is right. I mean, the, the thing is, when, when they drain into an area, they're draining into it at its current condition. And then, you know, for whatever reason, you know, they don't, it, it goes through private property, and some people like to keep that area nice and mowed and, and maintained, I guess you would say, but other areas want, other people want it to grow up for privacy. And it's private property.
There's no real bond on it.
Yeah, right. And so, the thing is, we don't, we, we, I mean, I, I don't know, I'm, I'm a Republican. I, I, I don't want to tell people what they have to do. I, I, you know, it's your property. I don't know, it is just, it isn't, but it's a challenge, because if they, yeah, if they build a pond, or they do something, it ends up affecting people upstream, and I don't have control over that. I, you know, I, I see the need in being able to do it, but, you know, it's, it's a problem, it's a challenge. I, I don't. I don't know. I, I'm not sure. I mean, but I think Gary is definitely correct. I mean, if anybody's gonna see the need of, you know, trying to help by either donating or allowing this to utilize, or, or, you know, that area for a right of way to where the county can maintain it with these pieces of equipment, you know, with, obviously after a storm where they see people damaged, and they see the, the need would be the, you know, the ongoing time, and the further it gets away from it, it's like, you know, you know, I want what's good for me, not necessarily that's good for the community, so.
Like you said, you're talking about a lot goes through lots, and several homeowners.
Yeah, yeah, there's a lot of different property owners that need to go through.
Yeah, I mean, you know, and all situations are a little bit different. Some of them might go through a single owner, and some of them two, some of them a bunch, you know, the one down point there. I don't know, there's probably at least a couple dozen homeowners on that particular gully.
Yeah, and that's one I refer to.
Yeah. And then you got Hat Berry, you know, which is another situation. The truth is, it's nothing that's not manageable. We're very much in better shape than Harris County, or Jefferson County, or a lot of other counties that are not really right sitting on the bay, where, you know, we're okay, but we've just got to address it, and it will take some expense to do it. And what you do is just a maintenance issue to keep it out. But I don't want to wait on another hurricane before we start trying to get some right of way.
We, you know, we put it in the subdivision manuals also, now that we, we, for, like, stuff that, along cotton, for instance, there's a lot of subdivisions, they don't really cross cotton. You have subdivision on the east side or the west side, and so, we put it there now where, yes, they have to donate for new subdivisions going forward, they have to donate some, some property that would allow us to go in there and maintain it. But, I mean, that hasn't happened for 15, 20 years in the past, so, you know, it's just a process, you know.
So, when it busts up the cotton, they will donate enough property.
Fifty foot from the center line, yeah. That, that would be part of the subdivision is, is, the way that it was done in the past, it would be that it's actually part of that person's property, and they're not supposed to build in it, but in reality, is what happens is like, well, heck, I don't like that big low area, so I'm gonna put dirt in there, I'm gonna build it up, and I'm gonna put my fence all the way back there, and it's good for them, but it ends up causing problems for everybody upstream. And so, I don't know, it's just, you know, when, when the subdivisions originally build up to these areas, it's fine. It's just that it's not maintained, and it's not controlled, and it causes problems for everybody upstream. And in that Barrow, Barrow Ranch area, I mean, it's the same thing. We've gone out, Billy and I went out there and looked at, met with several property owners, and they had these little drainage paths that go behind the subdivision, and they ended up, you know, it, it was a little wet area, you know, it stayed wet, probably had some mosquitoes, you know, just some of it drained well, some didn't, but people start putting dirt in it, filling it up with a fence back there. Well, then that really causes problems for everybody upstream, and it's just, I don't know, you know, it's, so many needs to, it's the HOA's responsibility, but they didn't know it was their responsibility. That's another part of the problem, is that when the owners, the developers do these things, when they pass it on to HOA, sometimes the HOA boards don't really understand that it's their responsibility. I don't know, it's, it's a, it's a huge issue, it really is. A drainage district could really solve some of this stuff, but we just, it needs to be defined well, and, you know.
Well, I mean, do you even think you can get that?
Well, I mean, I think we need to know what you're getting out of it.
Well, Westlake Plantation, who doesn't flood, you know, I don't know what the other big subdivisions are, really don't have issues like that. I mean, realistically, could you get that?
You know, Judge, I don't know. I, I don't know. I mean, that would, that would be something that the people have to decide for themselves. I think we need to be very factual and educate among the pros and cons of it. And I'm not saying a drainage district is necessarily the very best way to go. You, you know, it may very well be. I mean, I like it for a few reasons. One reason I like it is it does nothing but focus on drainage and flood control, flood prevention. You know, it, it's got one mission and one mission only. I like it for that. I don't like it because you're setting up another entity. You know, and every time you set up another entity, you're creating a monster that you can't stop. So, you know, if we were gonna address it in-house in the county, we gotta take some of the exact same steps we would have to take, or a district would have to take, to do the district. You know, and I think that's probably setting up a division or a department, you know, to take care of that. Let them focus on the drainage, and drainage only. I'm trying to talk to Corey, and he has to look at his calendar, probably booked up for two weeks, so he can give me 10 minutes. So, you know.
Alright, so, let me ask you this. While we're gonna be talking about Lawrence. While we're gonna be talking about lower tax rate penny. So what if you let that penny in there, put it all to flood control? And that would be an apparent figure that estimated one point eight percent increase. I see you're still under your, um, three point five percent. That's about half the, take it and put it all if in that scene, flood control. And then you got some funds to work with. You got some match money for G L O.
When you wanna do that right now, Judge? I mean, we're going into this thing kind of flying, we haven't really.
Well, we're not, we're not gonna buy all the tax rate today. We're gonna have a public hearing.
On, on the tax, because I haven't even seen the budget yet, you know.
No, I know, we're, we're gonna, we'll approve the budget next time and the tax rate fund that budget.
But I do, I, I do think that we need to declare that this thing is meets the parameters to, uh, hire an engineer. We're not hiring an engineer today, we haven't defined the scope. But I would like to make a motion that we do, uh, approve what is, what does it need to be? Trying to figure out how this is worded. I, I, I move that we, uh, approve that it is feasible, practical, and is needed and would be conducive to public health and be in the public benefit or a public utility. That's my motion.
I'll second that. First by Chris Combs, second by Chris Bass. Questions, comments, others?
Just, just to be clear, this is a, this is not another entity. I mean, when, when it says drainage district number one, I, I think that that is an entity. And when they came in here a while ago and spoke about it, it wasn't talking about an entity. They were talking about it being part of the county government, not being a separate entity. Am I misunderstood that or was that, is that your impression, Scott?
That's correct, Commissioner. Um, in going forward with these findings, the next step then would be the engineer. The engineer would then write the preliminary report and from that preliminary report, further steps down the road, uh, if taken are for the creation of a new entity.
Okay, so that, but that requires the approval of the voters of the district.
That's my understanding.
So it's my understanding.
So you'd have to have an election, either a special election or attacked on during a, another regular election.
Okay, now let me ask a question on that, Scott. If we move forward and, and we hire the engineer and we get a study done, we develop the scope, we get a study done on that. What was to stop the court at that time to decide that we want to do this in-house?
I'd have to, I'm afraid I'd have to go back and review for tailing them out to fifty-six as to what y'all's options are at, at that time. But my recollection would be that, uh, y'all would still have some discretion later on after the preliminary report comes in.
That was my understanding, that once we get that preliminary report, then we can decide if it needs to go to the next step to form petition.
Yeah, that is it. The creation, the court find the creation of ten percent drainage district, number one, feasible, practical, for the state. So it sounds like you're saying you're going forward, but. Of course, it's still gotta be put to vote.
Well, and we, well, it's still gotta be put to vote, but we still gotta get the engineer to look at the scope and just get an idea of what the cost magnitude and what it may, may take. I mean, the numbers I threw out was looking at raising the same amount of money that Trinity Bay raises. You know, it may take more than that, it may take less than that. Personally, I think it would take less, but, you know, we don't know.
You guys define the boundary, so we're gonna get your taxes on.
Right, well, you know, but we've got, we've got to do a study on it and, and just look at it. And that's where I'm getting judged. I mean, that's what I want us to do. I want us to really look at this. And whether we let the voters vote on a district, decide they want one or not, whether we decide to do it in-house. Either way, it's fine with me. I really, like I said, the pros and cons for both, but I just wanted to do something.
When I heard Marsha say she's the one to push this, right? That I heard her say she didn't want another level of government.
No, I heard her say she didn't want to pay a tax. And then she wanted us to.
Well, that's what I read into what you said.
I think I agree with the judge on that. I, I saw, she indicated that she respected the county to, to basically, well, well, we already received to dedicate some of those funds to the drainage of these areas. And it sounds to me that the people that, that are speaking for this are the ones that have an issue there. Is a minor issue, not like we don't have problems in other county, you know, Cedar Bio's difficult. There's, there's a lot of areas in the county that have problems. And sometimes when you, when you see things in, in, uh, in a small window, you're thinking about, well, if we just took care of this, we'd be in good shape, but. Yeah, something you're gonna talk about, there may be some other places that are gonna rank at a higher level than what their, their problem is, is what I'm getting at. May not be, it may not be the, it may not be the first thing that they look at.
I, I understand, that's always the case. And Hackberry, you know, and the stuff, Legends Bay is no small incident. People get water in their homes, it's not a small incident to them. And I'm telling you, I've written these things after some of these couple hour rains that we get. And Mr. Rose Way, that was in here just a few minutes ago, he's got pictures that will just baffle you at how high the water is. You know, Cory and I look at it and we can name a half a dozen things that contributed to it. But we can't do anything about it, you know.
There's nothing we can do.
Some of them are HOA issues, but some of them are not. Some of them's the exit point where, you know, that water has to get in that ditch, goes down Point Barrel Road. You know, we, I got issues on Point Barrel Road. We got a pipe going across the man's private property that's outside of our right of way. And he's got, and, and it's caved in and there's big craters and stuff going down in it. Cory and I looked at it over a year ago. We haven't been able to address that yet. You know, there's issues out there that just are not getting addressed.
They won't allow you to.
Well, no, we haven't gotten the manpower where to get it. I mean, I don't know if it's just Cory don't like me, but, or what, I haven't gotten it fixed yet. It's, you know, I'm just telling you, there's a lot of issues that I've been here for one or two years. I have not gotten probably five, probably one out of five, maybe a little bit better than that, addressed. It's just, and some of them we can't address, but we're just not addressing them. So Gary, I hear you, and, you know, and you're absolutely right. You know, and, and I think, the reason I said I like a district is it would be there to concentrate on it. If we had that in-house, you know, that would be there, would really answer my calls, you know, and we could go out, look at something and they jump on it and do it, it would be good, but we don't have.
So if you had a drainage division under Roden Bridge?
Yes.
Right.
And, and let me just address, so, I, and I understand three commissioners live on one side of the river and one commissioner lives on the other side. You know, and, and I, you know, when I think when, good word get in Gary's mouth, but Gary mentioned it being a small issue. I don't think he meant that, you know, somebody's house flooding wasn't a, wasn't a large issue. But it's, it's more of an isolated, like, we had a whole subdivision almost in Legends Bay that flooded. We had many whole subdivisions along Cedar Bio that flooded. And then we had whole communities that essentially flooded, you know, in the Handcomer area and over in Winnie Stoll area. And so. That's the thing. So we have addressed Cedar Bio as being addressed kind of through Baytown and, you know, interlocal between.
The navigation district?
Yes, several things there.
The drains in there.
We, we kind of, we've addressed what we could along Hackberry to try to help Legends Bay somewhat. You know, gotten, gotten out some of the stuff. Um, those are the larger community and then Handcomer and Winnie and WAC. You know, tho, a lot of those individuals have flooded twice in the last three years. And, and I understand, you know, so we're spending a lot of time over on the east side. You know, installing culverts, uh, you know, improving ditches, but it's ditches along existing county roads. You know, and, and we're getting on that and we're, you know, we just finished the Anwac, we finished Hackberry with that piece of equipment that y'all got. And we're close to being able to get off into some areas after we clean all the county road debris that hasn't been cleaned in a while. Then, you know, we'll be able to get off of that system and get into probably Trinity Bay area because they already have right of way. Some of these other areas that we're talking about, if we can acquire that right of way, we could do something where we remove the trees and stuff and help a little bit, like the area you're talking about. But Billy, I mean, seriously, and, uh, it has nothing to do with you, it's just, I, I'm trying to address first off, the, the places that have flooded twice. If they have flooded twice and they have undersized culverts and stuff like that, I'm really trying to get in there and make a difference along the streets and stuff in those areas. And, and, yes, I can't handle all of that, but we will get back to that ditch and making that, those improvements over there. It's just, it's, so part of it is right of way, getting marketing them to, with paths to be able to acquire some of that right of way where we need it. And, uh, manpower is an issue. We can't tackle it all at once, but I'm really trying to address areas that have flooded twice first. And I'm talking about not just areas, but actual houses. If they've had water up in their house two or three feet twice, just like the lady talked about earlier, I mean, I, I've been on the end where I've been out on the street and you, you hear these residents talk about, you know, why, you know, I remember in Beaumont, actually when I worked for Texas, I mean, it's, just a lady, her dad had passed away a month earlier. And all of his keepsake stuff was in the bedroom and it flooded. So all she had of her father's had flooded. And she had to take it out of her house and it was laying on her front yard. And we were a street over and she said, please, just come take this. It's killing me to see this memory of my father laying out, it was as if his body was laying out there on the yard. I mean, it's just the stress and mental fatigue that these people have gone through. You know, I, I do feel it and I, I'm trying to do everything I can, I, I promise you. It's just, uh, we are stretched thin, but I'm trying to get into those areas that have water in their house twice.
So what are we budgeting for next year, George, on the drought?
Uh, it's a, it's a, we pretty much have legal that we had this year.
Does that not include the? Wouldn't say we would budget it for the additional.
For the contract.
Contract?
No, it's in there.
That's included in that?
Yeah. So, I mean, yeah, like I said, one thing to do, leave the tax rate the same that may end up flood control?
We gotta do something. My, my, I, I'm not picking on Cory. You know, I understand as much as anybody that his resources are stretched thin. My point is, this court has not made the commitment to do it. I think we need to make that commitment. I, I, I know we need to make that commitment. And yes, a lot of things, you know, we talked about this last year. And I remember when the melding came by, well, in last budget season, we hired and we were gonna do two drainage crews. And they were, and they were quote unquote west side, you know, crews to put over there. But when a melding hit, like Cory said, they flooded twice, people flooded twice. And, uh, you've been working on the east side ever since. We've got a little bit of stuff over there, but not much.
But you're still cleaning ditches and culverts, thank God.
We are, we're doing it, yes, we are. We, all of our, we have drainage, you know, we have great all crews that are cleaning and they're all, all across. I mean, we, at times, we've actually pulled more crews over to Winnie, uh, a couple times. But for the most part, yes, they're all functioning. They're, they're cleaning culverts, we're installing. We've installed larger culverts, uh, throughout. I know like West Side, Carol was one, um, over in that area. We've got some up in the, you know, up in the Old River area, but, uh, anyway, we're, you know, we've, we've got, we've had the, you know, the first thing that we cleaned with that large piece of equipment is we finished Hackberry. And then just recently, we went over and finished, uh, Anwac ditch. Uh, we're now over on Fairview. We're gonna be working on crossover Eagle Road. Uh, those are some areas along our existing roadways and existing areas that are our, you know, within our, our area of responsibility that just hasn't been cleaned well. The vegetation, ditches got wet, uh, they stayed wet when we went through the moles and they skipped them. And then they ended up growing up higher and then, you know, then it's too difficult. Well, anyway, we're, we're fighting to get back and gain our right of way back and start cleaning that out. So, I mean, those are things we're trying to work on.
Really, I mean, I, I mean, and, and I know the judge and Eric are just tired of me asking about it. I mean, I've tried to get just a ditch cleaning crew, and I'm sure Cory is this area as well, that we don't pull them for our road program. Because we have to shut down, and Cory can testify, we stopped a lot of our ditch cleaning and stuff like that here at road program. If we had a crew that was dedicated to that, and that's the reason when we started wanting to get these off-road and, and off-road machines, I wanted three and we went to two and then we wound up getting one. If we had two, we could dedicate one to the east side, but we still need right of way. I mean, and, and Cory and I discussed the HOA stuff those days, but I have some stuff that needed trails that I need to get addressed. I've spoke with the, all the landowners and evaluated to Cory. Everyone of them is willing to donate the easement and right of way, but us going there and, and clear it and maintain it for no charge to the county. And, you know, we'll get with Scott and him to see what we can do about that. I mean, it may be a little more difficult on the west side to get some of those landowners to donate the easement right of way. So we can get another machine in there.
It's different in different spots.
Yeah, no, I think, I think.
Spots, I mean, I, I think, I think that's something we need to look at and address, uh, to, to do that. I mean, uh, if we can get with that landowner and get a machine in there and, and get that outfall cleaned, it would drastically lower the water level.
All right, is it work, leaving the tax rate the same, getting that one point one million, putting it all into flood control?
I just got text.
Wait, 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 okay. Let, um, and you gotta go back and there's some things we would have to do to get there to be able to prove it by the time we have to approve the budget and the tax rate. But we can look at. Go ahead, you got a text with Mark?
Yeah, well, she says she is in favor of the district. She wanted to clarify that. There seemed to be some misunderstanding here.
Okay.
But she, she is in favor of the district.
Without an increased tax?
Huh? Well, I, I guess she, I think everybody's against increasing tax. Me too.
I agree.
Well, yeah.
Me, me too, you know, uh, but we gotta find it, but right now, we don't know what that cost is gonna be. You know, uh, I'd like to move forward with getting a engineer to do some studying on it. You know, we can, we got a week or two to think about whether we want to leave the tax as it is and use that penny. But, you know, if we cut that penny and then the district took that penny, you know, uh, it's a swap off, is how it would go.
Well, it'll take it from the district.
It's gonna take, I guess the quickest would be November. I mean, not November, uh, May would be.
Well, you gotta get your study done before you put it to vote.
Yeah, probably longer than that.
Not in November, that's, that's my forecast.
Yeah, my other November, May.
All right, I got a motion in a second. We're gonna vote on it. Anything else?
Okay, this motion is to.
The motion is to.
Make it a fine less, which would then lead to the engineering.
Okay, then we need to put it on another court to get qualifications for an engineering firm to.
Right, and to put a scope together.
Yes.
All right, you understand it? I got a motion in a second, vote in favor.
All right.
Close, motion period. We are taking a break. Just let my way, put them back, boil me. I got it, Judge. All right, time to get a change order after three sets. It's now eleven twenty-one A M. All right, we're gonna go to one point seven. I got enough.
Okay.
Going down to one point seven, uh, seven point one, excuse me. Maintenance ability to discuss, consider change order, add an air conditioner to the air control facility for Arnold Construction in the amount of one, one hundred thirteen thousand eight sixty-nine ninety. Got Michael Essley on the phone. Mike, I'm gonna turn it over to you.
Well, well, Judge, uh, this change order came in, I put it on court, uh, with, with the, uh, the holidays and everything else. We really haven't had enough time to go through it completely, value engineer it, make sure everything was right. There's money that can be taken out of this. It just, you know, I, I just haven't had time to completely go through it and completely refine it now. I think we should, we're hold this over to the next court and let me get it down to where it really needs to be.
Okay, yeah, there was six in common this morning on, on how big the building was, how much drainage, uh, you know, and like excessive price for.
There's a, there's a, there's a whole lot that is involved. Well, there's a, there's a, there's a whole lot that is involved in this thing in in that there's, we're upgrading the service to a three-phase service. You know, we're we're, there's some warranty stuff in here that can be taken out. There's some parts and labor stuff. There's, there's things in here that probably need to be taken out. But to get the service there, it is gonna cost us. We're gonna have to upgrade the electrical service to the building. You know, there's just things that that are gonna have to happen to make this thing work.
All right, so you want to table it for next court?
I I think that's the best thing to do because that way, then I could come to you with something that that we can refine that.
Okay, sounds good. Anybody have anything?
Yeah, I mean, I I don't have my agenda up, but the part labor and fees. Find out what that fees is, man, there's some pretty hefty fees in with the part labor and fees when it's done each one and break down.
What now? Parts, labor and fees. Jimmy said the fees were pretty high. He said he wanna know what those were.
So we're just, I mean, is it parts, labor, and then underneath that is it fees?
Yeah, I see it.
Right, it's it's just the overhead profit for the for the contractor. That's just a normal thing.
Okay, so you value value engineer it, bring it back to us.
Okay.
Anybody have any other questions, Mike? Uh, Mike, thank you. Wait, wait, Mike.
Yeah, one one thing, uh, back to the public comment that we had this morning, just wanna clarify something with Michael. One reason, I know this building isn't really that large, but I think one reason it's so difficult to air condition it is because it's got so many doors that open and close on it. Is that, is that true, Mike?
Yes, sir. It, I mean, it to provide air in there on a constant, you know, with a hundred percent outside air and blowing air in there to make sure it all, you know, works the way everybody wants it to work. It's it's just, you know, the unit right now, I'm working on possibly, you know, looking at different units even, but I'm looking at right now a a unit that's gonna cost us around forty grand. And just to provide that much air in that small space.
Yeah, it really makes a good point. It's a small space, but what the door? How many, how many doggy doors are there?
There's thirty-six. So and 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 we're not talking about a big space. It's sixteen hundred thirty-one square feet. So there's not a whole lot of space, but you gotta force a a good amount of air in that in that space.
So tell me again, how many, how many, what's the space?
Sixteen hundred thirty-one square feet.
Cinder block.
Is that both?
Yeah, it is a cinder block, yes.
Hang on, Mr. Sheriff, cut something.
It's a tile.
Mike, hold on a minute.
Is that, is that both buildings?
Both buildings?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. All right, anything else? Okay, Mike, thank you. We'll table seven point one. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I don't know. All right, let's keep Mike playing the ones if we get through this. One point one. Public hearing, ten AM, discuss closed two thousand twenty tax rate, no new revenue rate. At one five three nine four nine zero for one hundred. It's eleven twenty-six AM. We will recess out of regular session of commission court and go on the public hearing this time. Aaron.
Uh, go ahead, Judge. Yes, sir. So this is part of the process to adopt the county budget. We lost court with, we just proposed, saying proposed budget. We proposed tax rate at one five three nine four nine, which was the no new revenue rate. Um, we put it in the paper and this is the public hearing for the tax rate. I think I said you have specific questions for me if you can answer them.
Okay, we're not gonna vote on it today. Uh, we'll need to approve the budget and then actually approve the tax rate on that budget.
And I know you're talking about maybe, does one, any, when we'll talk it with, leave and make sure that we still have time to do the whole process, if y'all want.
Yeah, I put aside to.
Aaron, I looked at your rate and it wasn't one penny, even the fraction.
Yeah, like, no.
It was like, what, about a half a penny, wasn't it?
Yes, it's less than a penny decrease, but the no new revenue rate.
And how much did you say that would equate if we left the rate flat versus doing the draw?
I don't have the the, if we kept the same, but with the with this rate, you would collect a little, about five and a half million dollars of the new revenue, of the new values coming online.
I'm just going back to what the judge had, what he suggested that we might do if we got the rate flat. Oh, how much additional funds would that give us that we couldn't put towards drainage without?
Uh, yes, sir. I I have the check for you. I don't have that with me.
One cent, according to Aaron, is about 1.1 million, so.
It's not quite.
No, I know, but that, if it's half of that, you're talking about five and a half million.
Yeah. So, okay.
All right, were there any public comments that came in that we hadn't addressed? All right, so no public comments, eleven twenty-nine AM. We'll return back into regular session. Uh, one point two, discuss seventy to twenty, twenty twenty tax rate, no revenue rate. Uh, we're not gonna vote on that today. We're gonna table it. And if you'd like to, we'll consider if it's possible to leave the tax rate the same, what money exactly it would bring in that could fund flood control. At one point three, public hearing, ten AM, discuss twenty twenty-one shiny budget. It's now eleven twenty-nine AM. We'll go back into, we'll recess out of regular session of commissioners court on the public hearing budget. Aaron.
Yes, sir. Um, so I've talked about it last last court, but I'll kind of rerun this again here. Uh, you can see that we have about ten and a half percent increase of certified value. Industry thirty-one percent of valuation, uh, I'm sorry, local thirty-one percent and industry six and a half percent of the valuation. Have a little little schedule here. You can see from twenty fifteen to twenty twenty, we have the increase that we've seen from certified values. On the next page show the tax rates, uh, the current tax rate for twenty nineteen is forty-six. The current proposed is no new revenue rate at fifty-three cents. With the border reset, border rates at fifty-seven cents. I put the collection rate on it for this, the projected collection rates by ninety percent collection. Uh, just to kind of give a little, a little conservative on it. Uh, I think usually we get pretty plus nine nine percent. Uh, you can see the tax year, uh, tax rate by year, draft year. Um, twenty ten was about forty-nine cents and for twenty twenty was looking at fifty-three cents. Uh, you can see that it kind of went up in twenty fourteen, fifteen. Business pretty stable, other sense. On the page, you can see the revenues. The taxes collected, but the revenue is about fifty percent. About fifty percent here. Uh, the budget breakdown. I haven't updated the budget breakdown, especially for twenty twenty, we're still having some tweaking to do. And I'll kind of talk about that on the next page here. So next page shows the debt, the debt schedule. Our debt did go up because we did issue debt for fourteen nine for the bridge and some contingencies for, you know, that part of the project. Um, currently our debt is sixty-one million dollars and we'll pay six point six million of it for this year, or for next year, I'm sorry. Um, we'll save about six million, uh, paying debt next until twenty twenty-three and then it goes down pretty drastic through twenty twenty-four. Uh, capital, this is some of the stuff we're, uh, we're still kind of working on here. So, you know, we told everyone that we would keep budgets pretty stable, the same. Uh, I did talk to big, big departments because, you know, they do have big projects going on and, you know, you wanna make sure they're still up and running here. So Cory, you know, we got about, he's requesting a one point one million dollars in capital budget, which is a decrease from last year. Um, with maintenance going down, you know, there's some projects that are still going out there like the Amputal Building. I think the library might run it to twenty twenty-one a little bit. And this also make, you know, we need to down this week to make sure that we're catching those projects. Uh, parks, uh, you know, I think the goal was try to do something in Anwack at the baseball field. So right now, he says that about a million dollars. And the ninety-six thousand is for some of the, uh, projects we postponed from last year, which are the, uh, some way, covering, covering. Uh, sheriff's office, you know, we're gonna, uh, keep, push that money forward so the sheriff can have his, you know, his, maintain his vehicle fleet. Um, just because they're all on a schedule, we wanna make sure we keep those on schedule. So I'll have a number there. I'll give one. Technology, necessary budget projects that didn't get done in twenty twenty, oh, that were postponed in twenty twenty, getting pushed back forward to twenty twenty-one. Uh, solid waste, something that kind of got brought up last week was possibly having to build a new cell. Um, Eddie got a quote for about two million dollars for the cell project. Um, we talked a little bit Friday. Um, we plan to talk to you again this week to kind of confirm that's something that we might have to do for next year. All right, so if we do have to do next year, how do we budget, do we budget the whole project? Is it, how long is the design take, you know, so we're still trying to figure that out. But that's the current number for the solid waste cell, two million dollars. Uh, one project we're trying to get going is the west side complex, you know, with my Bellevue. They're trying to get us out of their side so they can start building their park. Um, that's something we've been talking to with Mike, capacity, where we're at and what we need to do to get that that project rolling. Um, we're still trying to figure out a good budget number to set for that.
So we're looking at, uh, prioritize getting the road bridge solid waste, box that, and it's moving it down and paying one west side. And then, uh, same thing with part from the, for Anwack baseball field. Two things, maybe one, maybe the, uh, what we're looking at is is one new field and then, uh, the restroom. Uh, such a facility, and then the second phase.
How do the west side complex, uh, most of that would be funded with the, uh, sale that we're going to enter for relocation at two million?
Yeah.
So that wouldn't be coming out of town much?
Well, we got a budget, we got a budget. I I don't know when we're gonna close them. On the cloud park, I don't even have a cloud park. Yeah, right, sound a couple of months.
And right now, I think the, uh, the Texas Department Law Act issued that green space, still that issue going on. See what can transfer.
The last I thought I heard, and maybe I'm wrong, but I thought we were looking at October to get that straightened out, is that still on course?
I don't know.
I think I heard October.
Uh, going down to employees, the zero, the zero across the board, current and selling adjustments. Um, also association, um, last one we asked to reach out with to them and I think the sheriff did and.
I'm gonna let them do it. It went over like a nut, didn't it?
Maybe we can try to get a meeting together and discuss that with them. Uh, but I do have their spreadsheet of what'll be for point one. I think there's some people missing. Uh, so I'll get with the sheriff's office to kind of look at it, but, uh, I'll have a better idea for you all. Uh, going down employees, um, so we did budget the new county for law for three people, the judge, court coordinator and the bailiff for that for that for that new office for next year. Uh, there were, there were some requests.
Same already had a court report.
Yeah. And, uh, the tax office requested one person for the west side. Uh, you know, I'm I'm sure everyone knows, uh, her, her was on that over there. Uh, run register for three new truck drivers, uh, to help with, you know, I guess, working out, uh.
With what Jimmy was talking, or with what Commissioner Gore was talking about earlier. Uh, right now, we're to shut down, uh, the drainage crew that do the road program. So this would keep them running simultaneously. Um, and so I funded that within the capital allotment essentially.
Yeah, so we moved that money to, uh, Carol.
For no additional cost.
Uh, that's three, probably forty K, fifty. Um, so we, the health form has some grants running right now and they'll end in next year. Um, so to make sure that, um.
Could be, could roll over.
It could, you know, they could extend that grant.
It's, uh.
It's three employees, they're around fifty-ish.
I think the grants are made or.
Yeah, it's at the end of the, about mid, uh, twenty twenty-one. I wouldn't have even budgeted them.
Is that some of the COVID tracing that we're renewing?
It's a, an FBI investigator, it's, um, a health planner, and it is, um, somebody else, I can't recall the other person.
So with that position still being needed, if we start, I mean, you know, if the grants are not redone, should be because probably we're slowing down on the COVID epidemic, hopefully.
Uh, my friend from, uh, Mary's that those positions will still be needed. Uh, she just sent me a letter and and I'll, I will, I can forward that to y'all so y'all can look at that.
Yeah, those are, I'm gonna, they got FBI investigators on, on staff, on staff there.
Did everything go on, the school and everything else?
Those be schools, yeah.
Yeah.
And the next page, uh, yeah, I just put that on there just to kind of, as a reminder, you know, we did have to, uh, mind, uh, for Anelda and her Harvey, who's now got almost two million dollars. Um, so, you know, I think we should try to do something where we replenish the. So maybe we try to set some money aside where we can replenish those funds.
We expect any reimbursement on that?
Or Melda?
Anelda, Harvey.
We didn't make the threshold on, on Melda.
The damage?
Yeah, it's thirty-eight million. Uh, Hurricane Harvey. Got reimbursement, this is what we have to say.
I think so. Let me try to remind you to make sure, I don't wanna say that.
I I knew that's what you was gonna say on that email to do. I just wanted to to get some clarification out there, 'cause I had some questions.
Yeah, it's, and it's thirty-eight million, say taxes, make that threshold, uh, for damage before they would step there reverse. You know, your reimbursement, so that takes care of it.
That's all we have. If you have any questions or if you don't like what, you know, the personnel or.
Aaron, is this all we'll be getting or will you be sending us out a more detailed budget?
It may actually.
Yeah, I I can see the line by line. Uh, I know it's hard to look at some of that, but yeah, I can definitely send that.
I would appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Just a recommendation. All right.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Yeah, something that that may help, Aaron, there's things I think will really help on page four. You know, you've got your debt schedule graph, which I think is very beneficial. Uh, if you could add, consider adding a couple more, here's what I would pick it up.
Yeah.
Okay, so so we're talking about some long-term problems we're trying to solve, but we're looking at short-term information. So for one, I would go ahead and add your projected graph showing our projected, uh, taxable value for the future. Because you'll see in your graph here, on year twenty thirty-three, your debt drops significantly, right? Do you know what your taxable value will be in twenty thirty-three? Guaranteed based just on a vacant roll off. That ain't including the rub, you know what that number is? Twenty-five billion.
Yeah, we've looked at that.
So in less than thirteen years, you'll have double taxable value. So I think with long-term planning, you're gonna wanna have to look at this debt structure. And and I think that graph will help. And then I would also show possibly the payback schedule on FM fourteen on. And, and I think that graph will help, and then I would also show possibly the payback schedule on FM fourteen on nine, so that we don't forget, we got unless that contract's been restructured, we've got a minimum of a million, maximum of two million coming back to us, right? So I don't think it adds.
That's true, and other
So we got a couple million dollar a year coming back to us to repay us that twenty two million for that construction.
Starting next year.
It would be once, oh, it would be the year after we accept the job, so there only hit late. Next year, so you'd be twenty two essentially.
Yeah. And the third thing you might add that might help is we've got a bunch of beautiful graphs that Banner provided us on population projection. We've got the low forecast of like fifty five, sixty thousand, and I think we've got some high forecast that shows going up to seventy, seventy five thousand. That's just a recommendation, if that'll help y'all, but I think if you look at those graphs compared to your existing, that structure, it might give you some, some ideals on how to back some of these things up and solve some of these uh long-term problems with long-term solutions versus trying to find short-term solutions to saddle, you know, existing taxpayers with that burden.
Yeah, I, I made note, it, twenty twenty four was the drop, I'd be the time to go forward with the justice area, I hate to wait that long, but.
But you brought that up, I was gonna ask, when we uh, I'm looking at going back.
Okay, with, with the growth and the subdivisions, and I know Sheriff can interact this here, I mean, all the additional roads we're putting in and the, and people that's just flocking to this county, it's putting a load on him, and I mean, just
A lot on the jail.
The jail.
On the old jail.
And patrolling this whole county and, and, and being efficient in it, and I had to talk to them, but I mean, with the more growth and the more roads and, and, and the sheriff's office and skeeter control, everybody's having to cover all these roads, I mean, so it's only gonna continue to add to us.
Well.
Bad personnel and everything.
We got a high level of services, you look at what other counties provide. But that, and that maybe what Tony said, look at its taxable value for twenty, the next couple of years, even, you know, your, your debt rate when is it ever, tell you just to put it out behind.
Yeah, I'm gonna add, Aaron, I were talking, your, your, your current budget graph shows, you know, and what I just heard was a lot of these problems are being created by growth. Growth due to, I mean, we've given tax payments, industry's growing, but it, in lieu of taxes, we're getting three eighty one months. So fifteen percent of your revenue you're showing is coming from three eighty one. Aaron says that's about nine million dollars, so about four million of it is committed to infrastructure projects. The other five million is basically going to fund the general fund, right? And so I think that's an area we gotta watch, is when we give a vacance, we got growth, we get pilot payments, and the pilot payments, maybe first priority might be infrastructure and drainage versus funding.
I agree.
We use that money in the past to build arenas and, and things that, look, the public wants, that's great, but first priority should be purpose. I think the spirit of the three eighty one was the service.
God, I think Billy and I talked to BJ and said, yeah, that's where we need to go with this. Actually, you know, the east-west roads, drainage on the west side, just kind of things. That could, I'm writing on the west side, even, in fact, we got three eighty one months now that's dedicated for uh like three roads over there.
All right, so we're gonna be, yes, so we're gonna be extending Kilgore, uh, we gotta get the engineering done for that, and then the road construction for that. Acquiring right away and uh improvements uh for needle, old needle, and as it comes across to thirty one eighty as, as well potentially. Yeah, so maybe some improvements on uh acquiring right away and doing stuff on EW four as well to try to help the get some traffic off of uh twenty three fifty four that Philly alluded to earlier, so.
Yeah, that may be our next three one agreement in that area.
Right.
And see it forward is uh, keep that, that improved.
Yeah.
To get folks going north, to get their folks going north instead of getting on pushing road.
Well, just as, as thirty one eighty and twenty three fifty four, you know, get widened, but, I mean, we've got developments coming in left and right, we just, we need reliever routes uh east-west, there's just a lot of traffic over there. We need to keep up with it for sure.
And like I said, we have talked to BJ, Aaron, Commissioner Collins, I'll tell, he knows. Uh, what else? Anything? Aaron, when you go to the budget after you you did a quick on that? Okay, so, would be posted work, though, we can look at it also.
The proposed is already on the website.
Okay. I'll listen to you.
All right, so it's eleven forty eight AM, we will recess, uh, turn out of the public chamber, correct the session, and go, go exit on one point three. We'll go to one point four, discuss consider possible action on resolution directed by approval, tax rate at eight percent, no matter what added by for special taxing entity previously approved in July twenty eight, twenty twenty. And I understand the upper were about eight percent tax, and you know, it's, we'd never plan on going into taxes unless and I understand what Lady says tomorrow, Miss Iswich, you know, you don't tax somebody or tax somebody when they've been hit hard, but you also get help from the cover, so if we'd had, if we would had, um, what's her name, Laura? We'd had Laura come in, hit the dead center, another one right behind you, another, we, we could get a bind. So it's possible it could have been needed, but at this point, it doesn't look like that, so. Motion back to Mr. Gore?
Yes, sir, I'll make a motion, we, we're seeing the
Also, yeah, second back to Mr. Nelson, any discussion, both in favor, opposed, motion carries. One point seven, discuss consider request by HHS C, guilty human services commission entered to attend year memorandum of understanding regarding Champ County on building to two oh four North Texas Avenue in LA.
Yeah, I read over that and spoke with Scott. I think Scott agreed, we need to take it to executive session.
Do we need to take it to executive session, or you still want to work on the?
I'm taking it to executive session, I'm gonna discuss the council also involved in doing the problem.
All right, executive session. One point eight, discuss consider meaning of proving the agreement with Liberty County, both funding of the Liberty County of the Liberty Chambers Community Supervision Correction Department employee used to reg chambers county community supervision correction department to wit amending reimbursement levels, let me guess, but so.
I did want to provide as much notice as possible. Uh, Judge, y'all may recall, Commissioner, y'all may recall back at the beginning of May, May twelfth, uh, we reached an interlocal agreement with Liberty County for the sole use and acquisition of one of the co-directors and deputy director of the newly intended and created Chambers County Department, so, uh, what this is, is a after-the-fact correction. The original intent had been to make payments to Liberty County for all of the costs, including benefits for this individual's employment for sole use by Chambers County while this uh new probation department was being created. So it all went swimmingly until we received a request for reimbursement, and that request for reimbursement had additional salary benefits, which we didn't have in the first document, first document was actually for uh eight thousand, three hundred thirty three dollars and thirty three cents per month for reimbursement levels. The true full value, including benefits, is ten thousand, four hundred and sixty three dollars and two cents. So the modification would be for those additional benefits we reimburse for the timeframe which she was serving uh Chambers County to create probation department. And I can tell you that the probation department was successfully created, I think there might still be some uh financial issues, the, the issue going on between the department, but was created on September one, Eric Carlock is the director of the Chambers County
So maybe you can walk in this way?
Whether she has a, a meeting scheduled for the judicial board, I know Shay there is a uh, but basically, this is a modification of what you previously approved for the uh benefits which were not originally taken into consideration. We just had a monthly salary, they have monthly salary plus uh forty benefits.
Scott, her insurance is paid by the state though, correct?
That is cool.
Yeah.
Yeah.
She's a state, they're a state employee, employee. Right, it's got a policy that is, we're really working on, we had a meeting with them, I guess, the third part. Sit down, sit down with Mike Anderson, Aaron and Scott and them. Uh, there's still some issues, but we, we do have our own probation problem.
Very well. So when, when, when do we start having people that we can get to clean up the streets and stuff like that, probationary?
Can't talk probation about that. I mean, it's people on probation, it's uh, you know, with the COVID and
How are we gonna be able to utilize them when I'm getting?
We can utilize them, same way we utilize them now, or even more, but I don't know about putting them in the van
No, no.
Under this environment.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, how, with this environment, how are we gonna be able to really utilize them?
You can give you, uh, Ms. Carlisle.
He can forward it to me.
Yeah, contact, see, I mean, that's why if you use them, it's still social distance.
Okay.
All right, entertain the motion.
Some move.
Much back to Mr. Gore, second back to Mr. Collins. Was it favor, opposed, motion carries, I think we are done with the first base. And seven one stable, seventeen one, discuss consider approving an agreement, Jefferson County Crime Lab for the provision of crime laboratory testing and services for criminal investigation, Scott.
Yes, Judge, this is round two of an interlocal agreement, y'all did approve one last summer, very similar to this, unfortunately, after Chambers County approved, I read that it went and got to Jefferson County for therein. Uh, they decided it was not beneficial for certain internal reasons, um, nothing at all to do with the lack of cooperation. So moving forward again, uh, approximately twelve months later, there are some very small modifications to what you approved last year uh executed fully versus what you have for today. One of those is instead of being an annual payment to reimburse them for services, it's now uh much more frequent according to the terms that they requested. But not only that, the price has gone down substantially, whereas last year, each individual test was estimated for approximately three hundred and eighty dollars per test. They've now separated out that built-in two hundred dollar testimony fee, and so each uh, the most commonly used uh effort for this lab would be approximately one hundred and seventy five dollars a piece. So the cost for the majority of testing that they could be used for has dropped by over fifty percent. We would only be paying that testimony fee in the uh for, for testimony, so it is actually a more beneficial uh interlocal agreement this year to utilize Jefferson County for the services. They have the Chambers County that's not, and as you may recall, without trying to open up this big old um lengthy discussion about why it's necessary, the short of it is, is that the Department of Public Safety has uh delays based upon the number of cases that they test as well as uh band hours and personnel they have, and so the overarching issue from the DA's offices, I recall, is that they weren't able to indict individuals on felony drug amounts in ninety days, they were automatically required to give PR bonds and for misdemeanor prosecution, I will tell you that the Department of Public Safety over the last several years has basically initiated a reduction in services where it's almost impossible for misdemeanor drugs to be tested, uh, they won't test misdemeanor drugs at all if there's a felony amount. Uh, if somebody has multiple drugs, uh, that they're arrested with, they will only test the highest penalty level, which of course would make it very difficult just from a prosecutorial standpoint. I will tell you, if somebody has meth, ecstasy, cocaine, marijuana, and alprazolam in their possession, and then the lab will only test the top drug, the state will, the prosecution will be unable to uh prove beyond their reasonable doubt to a jury the other four charges. Therefore, you're automatically setting up somebody to only be accountable for one drug, and the other four offenses they commit will be untroubled under that method through that lab. Therefore, from a uh prosecutorial standpoint, there is a need to have additional testing that we want as opposed to a lab which has said we, you know, based upon our circumstances, we've got to cut back on who we concern and how much we concern. So this benefits law enforcement in Chambers County by reaching this interlocal agreement to give us an alternative on where to send our laboratory cases now. This is not a funding agreement, Liberty County, uh, Jefferson County does not care where we get the money to fund these laboratory cases, these criminal cases, and so that is a separate discussion issue with court. This is just an agreement that we can go to them and uh for a certain amount of compensation, they will draw our workforce. Any motion?
That's where the additional fee comes in for the additional drugs, I saw it was one seventy five plus a fifty dollars for additional.
Yeah, so, you know, one of the uh, all Trinity locally is uh, Pedro, putting it from so those three, uh, the first one would be one seventy five and it would be a hundred for the other two, so it'd be two seventy five, that's all three, and then go for it on all three charges. Does the court try to reimburse the facts from the uh absolute, make the mission the goal of courses to everybody that, when they dispose of their cases, to reimburse through uh either their either their strength uh plea or probation plea, and by the terms of those agreements, to reimburse uh the cost of those drugs. So hopefully, if there were, say, twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars in fees for the remainder of the year, you know, it'd be a rotating upfront cost by the county that we are being billed for, you know, Jefferson County's crime lab, and then a consistent reimbursement through the courts, the judiciary courts and county courts.
So we have any idea what we need to budget for that, uh, so, or do we have some other there?
Rough estimate would be just sheriff's office cases would be approximately two hundred, two hundred and fifty drug cases in a year. Now, the next question becomes, does the county put the bill for other agencies in order to make uh payments for laboratory testing? Say for instance, Mont Belvieu, Mont Belvieu was in the same boat as the sheriff's office, where they send their samples to the Department of Public Safety and the Department of Public Safety will either test, or should test, or that scenario just gets repeated, or all of the other agents, gang wardens, Mont Belvieu, Baytown, so what can I tell you, there's the potential for upwards of maybe four to five hundred submissions per year. I think the sheriff's office will probably have a submission level of approximately two hundred to three hundred, and it's hard to tell year by year. But that would be my best guess of some parameters.
So if we get reimbursed, whether with EPS, I would imagine fifty thousand for a year would be Even if we use, even if we don't allow the other agency to
So, I'm sorry, I was, but I had a thing. Obviously, our sheriff's office would be the number one priority, however, in order to assist with prosecution, both the county's office and my office needs as many resources as available. And we have it, uh, under the current standard, basically, uh
Cause we're gonna prosecute anyway, whether it's the Mont Belvieu case, Baytown case, and Chambers County, or DPA.
Correct, and hopefully we would be getting reimbursement of, hopefully fifty percent of the costs year by year.
This contract has to be rewrote to include them?
Yep.
Would not loans just be in process?
Over to
Over to
Anytime, uh, some move, Judge? Much back to Commissioner Combs, Commissioner Gore, thanks to CAG, and Mark.
Yes, sir.
Second back to Commissioner Travis. I know some Scott's been working a long time.
I'm him, Scott, appreciate it.
Those in favor?
I oppose.
All right, it's good to stand.
If I may start off, sorry to interrupt whoever was going to be first.
Oh, you can start off.
I didn't want to ask that nineteen point one two be tabled. There were some errors in the document that we received and those need to be corrected.
All right, anything else, Scott? Corey?
Twenty-three and twenty-four.
Table twenty-three and twenty-four. Anybody else got anything they want?
Well, I'm still. I thought you were gonna go around calling.
Oh, no, so we're all on the same run together now.
All right.
Everyone's go first.
I would like to make a comment on the, on number six. All the adult probation, new hires don't have any auditor approval. You know, I was just curious why.
Aaron, so. We only sign on for budget approval, verify that it's been budgeted. So if budget, something new and a budget hasn't been certified yet, or there's something in the budget, we don't sign on just letting you know that it's not budgeted. And sometimes Aaron may have a budget.
Yeah.
On the exact same agenda.
I wasn't aware of these actually on the agenda that are actually structured. But yeah, the budget, I think it's being ready to be certified. I don't think it's been certified just yet.
Got to be certified by a different judge, right?
It could be too. There are a lot of these are getting put on agenda that are bypassing all, just so you'll know. So if some of them we don't sign, it could be we've never, we've never seen.
I just want to make sure there. We, we are budgeted and. I'm not getting horse, I'm a car for the horse here.
Say it again, Billy.
I just want to make sure we are budgeted.
Well, they're our employees and we're working on the budget.
Okay, are these coming in at twenty twenty-one?
No, they're here now.
They're here now?
September one, it's a budget year for the state. It's if they're our state employee. And that, you know, there's grant funds, stuff.
Okay.
Yeah, they're actually our employees, September one.
And. All right, what else, Billy?
The, the, the other question I had, what's about the item number thirty-three? Design bill is project delivery method for the Chambers Park Baseball Court metal building. What is that?
That's a basketball court.
A basketball court, okay.
Yes, it's. It's something we've been working on, Judge and I have been working on, I guess, my first thirty, ninety days in office building. We hadn't ready to go. Mike's getting the engineering. We've already done some work out there. Parking areas, covered picnic areas. You've got an existing slab, the slab of.
Yeah, we put that in a few years ago.
Yeah, the slab's in great condition. We used to cover, go over basketball goals and that's.
And that design bill, Mike tells us that we can save money making the design.
We can save a whole lot of money with that, Judge. I've been working with Mike closely on that as well as our other new hire, Mike, on the baseball park, so. But you stay on this one, Billy. The basketball court covered, the slab's already there.
Okay, I just.
Yeah.
Don't we know about that?
Yeah.
All right. That's all, Judge.
All right. Gary?
Twenty-eight, the air filters, are they, are they like the mask?
They're big.
They get air through there where you can't hear it?
Twenty-eight.
These COVID air filters we're gonna put on our AC units.
It's air. The Merv thirteen COVID air filters.
The first one I've ever seen, air filters, been on Commissioner's court.
We checked out a bunch of them.
This is, if I remember right, it's on Commissioner's court because it had to be approved through the FEMA process so we can get seventy-five percent reimbursement.
I, I thought that the, these weren't refundable because of who it was getting from or through that HUD bill, not the HUD bill, but you know, HGAC, they're not an approved vendor through FEMA. So we're not gonna be able to get reimbursement anyway. But if we, I mean, if we weren't gonna be able to get reimbursed, we could go out for three bids and maybe get them cheaper or something. I mean, I mean, it's, what's the deal with that?
Yeah.
HGAC is not an approved vendor through FEMA. So in them being a, a, what you call it, co-op, doesn't apply to these filters. And I only saw one bid in there from, from them.
We can give Mike on phone. Gary?
Yeah, thanks for anything else is above, but you know, I mean, it was, it was just a price.
Yeah. HGAC, I talked to Chuck Winfrey, he thought they'd gotten the thing straightened out, but apparently there's still some, I don't know, something that needs to be done. All right, what else? We'll get Mike on phone. Gary, anything?
I think I told a lot.
Jimmy?
Mark, did you have anything?
All right. No, Billy brought up my, my bright light discussion, so, no, I'm good.
Hello.
Hey, Mike.
Yes.
We're talking about the air filters and HGAC and.
No, we're not, I don't know where he came up with HGAC because they're, they're through my board, approved vendor. So where he came up with HGAC, I don't know.
So you're talking about an approved FEMA vendor?
Absolutely, through my board.
I, I know there, I know there was some discussions with HGAC and.
That didn't have anything to do with these air filters.
Okay. Jimmy?
Okay, now, what Gary asked about the Merv thirteens, yes, they are gonna put a load on, on our units because they're filtering a whole lot more, you know, particles through them, so. But that seems to be where everybody's going nowadays. We're, we're going with the Merv thirteens if we're gonna monitor the units to see how they, how they do. If we have some units that are not getting enough air, then we're gonna have to go to plan B.
But we're gonna try these due to COVID nineteen, correct?
Absolutely.
Especially in the jail.
Absolutely.
Mike, what about that light, that ultra light that they were talking about? I mean, some kind of black light.
Right now, right now, I've got a price to, to install them in the jail. And to install them and all the, all the, the units in the jail was only like four thousand dollars, which was pretty reasonable. So we're looking at going ahead and providing them in the jail. The courthouse has one already. And then we're gonna, we're gonna start kind of branching out to the individual buildings from there. Kind of see how they work at the jail and go from there, Keith.
So, so tell me what the ultra light does?
Supposedly, supposedly somehow it, it, it kill the article or, or whatever you call the.
Turb?
Yeah, the turbs or whatever.
Okay.
I don't know how it works either, but I mean, I, I, they said something about it's using on airplanes and stuff like that. And it does a bad job. I don't, I don't know how it works, but.
I understand that, that before COVID, they were putting them in if, if people had, you know, uh, hard time breathing, you know, asthma, that kind of stuff, that they put them in their systems that it helped a lot for, for that.
Hey, Mike, do they have a useful light? I mean, I mean, I say these filters, are they gonna be something we march or they gonna something we have to replace?
Well, so far, so far, the one at the, at the courthouse has worked pretty well. The thing about these lights is, you know, before you open up, if they're, if they're not something you want to open up and be looking at, so, you know, we have the habit to where if one of my guys opens up that, that unit, it shuts that light off automatically so they're not. You know, it, it, it's kind of like looking into somebody welded. You don't, you don't want to open it up and, and be looking at that light.
Burn your eyes. So Gary's question was about the filters. Can you wash them or are they disposable or?
No, they're disposable. They're, they're all disposable.
Okay. Will the, will any of our units have to be modified to accept these new filters or are they slide in the same side?
No, sorry, we, we order them per unit per building.
Just like the regular filter.
Okay.
Yes, sir. We, we were using a Merv eight, now we're going to a Merv thirteen. And some of our older units, we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to watch and see if they get enough airflow.
Okay. Any other questions, Mike? I might, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
All right, back to Mark. No, Mark's done.
No, I, I just want to make sure we, we, back on, that was my main concern. I thought, I thought it did tie to HGAC.
No, that was, that was my mistake.
There was some questions of like HGAC going around last week, but I don't recall what we were talking about.
Okay. I see number fifteen, we had lower rates on insurance. That's a great thing. I just want to make a comment on. I, I saw it go down, so that's, that would save us some money there as well. What brought up number sixteen? What brought up this policy, patient's policy today? And there's this protocol, was that what was that?
Good question.
I mean, I, I didn't be in holiday yet. I didn't get a chance to talk about it. I'm just curious what, what instigated that?
Well, it says clinical policy and procedures, so, I mean, we can ask it if you'd like to.
If you don't mind, they know who was having some issues with.
Not aware of any.
He's not sitting over there?
It may be door ringing. Cause he is up here for you, see?
Were you ringing over there? What else, Jimmy, while we're trying to get?
No, then, I mean, I had a comment on that design bill from Mark, though. I mean, is that the ones that are pre-engineered stamped, Mark? Design build, is that's already windstorm approved through?
Yeah, that's the whole deal about it.
Yeah, I, I agree with you because, I mean, that, that can save us a lot of money. We're not having to pay an engineering firm to design everything with any mechanic that've already set, engineered, approved for certain.
Yeah, that's my understanding.
So, I mean, I'm, I'm, I'm geared to that. Okay. Because, I mean, I've got two, it's gonna go in handcoming and one side. It seems like every time we turn around, we're paying someone to design and they've already stamped and free.
Windstorm. Their buildings are pre-engineered.
And they come with a slab design.
It sounds like an attorney never stood a foul.
All right, we got Ron on the phone.
Yeah.
Hi, Ron. Number, number sixteen, no patient policy. Commissioner Gore was asking why we did that. Just.
Just for, to, to use common language. So because we took over for two other ER services and we had people that came in from other services, we were having some, wasn't any issues with this doing anything appropriate. They're just not technically doing them the correct way. Some of them were putting in a, a patient assist for something that was more of a canceled on scene, I think, of nature. So it was basically just to get a common language set across the board for everybody so they knew which coach to use for no patient criteria.
We don't recommend Winnie use that as well. I mean, since our person that works over there.
Dear Jimmy? Ron?
Yeah, go ahead. I could, I could hear you broke away.
God. Jimmy said, are we gonna ask Winnie to also use the same protocol?
Uh, yeah, they, they have a similar protocol that they're gonna put in place as well. They use the same language. Um, it's for reporting, it's for the reporting purposes for our, for our monthly reports is mainly what it's for.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Good, thank you.
I don't have anything else, Bill.
All right, anyone else? If not, I'll entertain motion to approve and stand. What's my first pass?
Look, second back to Commissioner Nelson, and that's table in twelve, twenty-three, twenty-four. Favor? Opposed, motion carries. All right, this time we're gonna go into executive session, one point seven. Then twenty point one. Discussing center request for counter immediate action relating to civilian personal property damage. And under constitutional attorney, such a five five one oh seven one. And deliberation regarding real property, such a five five one oh seven two. So it's now twelve nineteen PM, to reach out our regulation, going to executive session, Commissioner's court. All right, so let's everyone leave, the commissioners, and then we'll call you. You gotta stay. And then we'll call you back in as needed.
All right, Court Commander, our executive session is twelve forty-one PM. One point seven is tabled and we'll go down to twenty point one. I'll entertain motion.
I might get motion, Judge, a motion to provide restitution for the property damage up to four thousand four hundred and seventy dollars and seventy-five cents for the reimbursement and disposition of severe claim.
Sorry, Gary. Much back to Commissioner Gore, second back to Mr. Combs. Those in favor? Opposed, motion carries. Done it all, so nothing to come to the court, twelve forty-one PM, we are adjourned. Here.